All right, well, we had a problem with the timer over there. But our intention is to give you guys five minutes in the beginning to introduce yourselves and say why you're running for city council. So he will still be keeping time. And what we'll do is we'll just go ahead and start with Chris Stevens.
Okay. Do I get a 30-second warning or anything? Or I just have to count in my head and try?
No, I'll tell you.
Okay, that would be fabulous. That would be fabulous. Okay, I'm Chris Stevens. I retired as principal over at Hawthorne about, I think, six years ago now. It doesn't seem that long. I came here specifically to take that job. I was in western Washington, and I'm originally from the Midwest. And I needed to see the horizon. And so I moved here. And I always distinguish in these moments what I've done versus who I am. So what I've done is I started a not-for-profit corporation back in the Midwest years ago that at last check was still functioning. So I had to deal with a board of directors. I had to figure out how to make budget. I had to figure out how to get health insurance and pay my people. All of those kinds of things. So I understand the struggle that a lot of small businesses have. I was also a freelance artist. So I had to create the work that paid myself in order to survive. And so I understand how to put it on the line and put it together and make it work. I was a teacher, a public school teacher. Taught in some inner-city schools where I was in the racial minority. Did some work in safe school for the blind. Worked in a tribal school. Worked in a school for people with severe and profound cognitive disorders, delays. And for much of my education career, I was a principal. And I was a principal by choice in schools that served challenging populations because I enjoy those students terrifically. They're very smart, very worldly-wise. And I believed that those families deserve the same consideration as the more well-to-do families. Who am I? I'm a person who believes in straightforward conversations. I don't believe in making decisions by smoke and mirrors or schmoozing. I will own my decisions, and I will be able to tell you why I made them.
Okay. You know.
That's my warning?
No.
That's it?
Okay, you got three hands.
Oh, okay. All right, great. So I, it's very possible, just as when I was a principal, that I may make decisions if I'm elected that would have people be irritated with me. That's going to happen. I think only people who aren't realistic think you can please all of the people all of the time. But I will own the decisions I've made. I will be able to tell you why I made that decision. And it won't be what I think. It will be the research that I've done and the homework that I've done because I believe in making decisions based on verifiable information. I believe deeply that government serves the people. People pay elected officials. Elected officials work for the people. It is the job of elected officials to reach out to the public. That is part of what we get paid for. Fulfilling our legal obligation to have a public hearing is not the same as reaching out and communicating. I believe in going to neighborhoods, and I believe in asking neighborhoods, "What are your issues?" Because each neighborhood has a different set of issues. And I believe when important decisions are being made, that the conversation starts early. Early, way early. And because people are busy working, taking their kids to soccer and ballet, surviving, it is our job to rattle their cages and say, "Hey, something important is being discussed and decided, and we want you here because it's going to affect you." Thank you.
Right, that one fits. Can you see that over there?
Mm-hmm. That really helps. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so he's got that fixed now. Your turn.
Good evening. My name is Dale Spencer, and I like to start, I like to say that I came to Pocatello on purpose, and I chose Pocatello on purpose. I'm not from here. I came here for a temporary job over 15 years ago. When I showed up in southeast Idaho, I knew nothing of Pocatello, Blackfoot, Idaho Falls. But I chose Pocatello because it was then, and I believe still is now, a diverse university town, beautiful surroundings, culture, and many recreational opportunities. Since arriving here, I've made a commitment to this community by being involved in this community. I'm on the Arts Council. I'm the vice president of the West Side Players. I'm a drama and debate judge with high school district and state level because they asked for the help. I'm on the board of Temple Emmanuel Synagogue, the only synagogue in southeast Idaho. And I'm on the Interfaith Council. So I understand a lot of the religious background of our area. I still have a day job. My day job is at the I N L. I work as an instructor. I teach nuclear safety and supervisor skills. Before I came here, I was a test engineer and a quality assurance engineer. That is my background in education is engineering. So I very much understand fact-based research and science-based research as to why you're doing something. I have worked as a building contractor. I held my own license in North Carolina before I came here. I'm a military veteran. One of the challenges I see is I need to, we need to fulfill the city's mission statement, specifically promote and engage in open dialogue, which, as Chris alluded to, we have perhaps not done a really good job with, but we need to work on that. And that's one of our challenges going forward. And we need to treat our fellow employees with compassion and respect. So if we don't understand or agree with their positions, we need to reach out to them and make sure we're trying to reach and come to a mutual understanding. I'm here because I believe I'm mature enough to understand the perspectives and face the challenges, and healthy enough to meet the demands of city government going forward. I have energy and enthusiasm to move the city forward for all of its citizens. Regarding law enforcement and firefighters, I have a rather unique relationship with them. My son is a law enforcement officer in Alaska, so I have a different perspective on law enforcement than perhaps many people do have a family member in the business. And I was trained as a firefighter when I was in the Coast Guard. So that was 40 years ago, but the principle's still the same, that you go and get people out and get them safe where they need to be. Chris summed it up very well. When we need to have open communication and open discussions with people, when we have difficult things facing us as a city, when we have challenges, make sure we're engaging the right people. Are we engaging our citizenry when we look at, what do we pay our teachers? What do we pay our firefighters? What do we pay? Are we engaging our citizenry when we have to change our tax structure? Are we engaging our citizenry when we talk about where is our water bill going and that water, and the current mess we have with our water bills? Are we engaging our citizenry in those discussions so they don't come back to haunt us years later? I'm running for, I'm, people ask me why I'm running against Jim. I'm not running against Jim. I'm running for the same seat Jim is. I have nothing against Jim. Jim's done a great job serving this city. But I'm not running against him. I'm running for the same, I'm also running for the same seat. Chris, I'm running against Chris. I'm running, I'm running for the same seat Chris is. So I'm not running against him. When I'm running for the city, I want to represent all the people of the city. Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
Thank you, Andy. I really appreciate the opportunity this evening to make a presentation in terms of what we're all about. I am grateful for the city of Pocatello. I'm very excited for our possibilities. I'm grateful for the diversity that this community has and for the opportunity I've had the last number of years to learn more about people and our community. I can spout off some really pretty good statistics. Do you realize we have 265 miles of double-lane road that's paved in the city of Pocatello? Do you realize we have about 12,000 cats and 11,000 dogs that we know about? We have responsibility for taking care of the roads, the animals. But most importantly, we're responsible to take care of the people of this community. I feel that in the time that I've lived in Pocatello, that I've had a great opportunity to get better acquainted with the people. I've, I like to look at myself as a servant leader. I've had the great privilege of being in a number of service organizations such as Rotary. I've taken the opportunity to be involved in many, many service projects because there are things that need to be done, and you can't hire people to do everything. So I'm really grateful for those, those opportunities. I'm excited that we have 29 parks, and 21 of those have playground opportunities for our children. I'm really glad that we have people here from the school board tonight. I'm grateful that we have people from Neighbor Works here to hear the discussion because the decisions made by the city, council, and mayor are very, very important to all of these organizations. I'm grateful to see so many of our first responders here because I think I've been a defender of our first responders. I think I've stood up for what's right, and I'm going to continue to do that if you choose to have me serve on an ongoing basis. I really think that there are misunderstandings that take place between city employees and city government. But as we talk to each other, as we communicate, as we do things together, we're going to be able to continue to make things right. I've witnessed some misunderstandings, but because we meet quarterly with the police union and with the fire union, we've been able to get some things taken care of that we otherwise would not have known or understood. I've had the privilege of going with the fire union and installing some smoke detectors over on the west side of town. That was a great privilege for me. I was not as good on the ladder as our firemen and women were, but I was able to see what a difference smoke detectors make. I was grateful to go over to the Lincoln Center and help pass out coats to the needy children that did not have adequate coats that the firemen were able to do. I stood over on El Rancho and helped fill the boot. Another great cause. Our unions have not sought after the great publicity that others have, but it's been great to see good things take place. I think our unions have done a wonderful job in terms of helping people to understand the needs in our community. When we've had a fire, I know the fire union has made sure people had a place to stay. Those are the sort of things that we, we need to do. But who am I? I'm Jim Johnston, seeking seat one on the city council in Pocatello. And I have some ideas in terms of how to save money. And if you want to know about those, I'll be happy to answer. Andy, back to you.
Okay. So I'm going to give Austin a minute to try to figure out how to reset that to two minutes. Our intention is that I'll ask a question and allow each of you to answer it, but we're going to change where we start each time. And then Val will ask a question, and we're going to alternate back and forth. So.
Can I get just the easy questions?
Everybody gets all the questions, unfortunately. Or fortunately.
Maybe you get the easy question first, Jim.
Okay.
Sweet. So Austin got it figured out. All right, so we're going to start with Chris on this one. This year, there was a very contentious and public negotiations with both the police and fire unions. What would you do to improve this process going forward?
So there are, in general, under a variety of names, two kinds of bargaining, oppositional and interest-based. And if you, if an organization or a community is interested in using the negotiating process to build community rather than to create further wounding, you use interest-based bargaining. That means that both sides lay their interests, what they want, what they need, and there is an expectation that each side has done a very thoughtful prioritization and made distinctions between wants and needs. And then the communal interests, what we want to get done, what we believe we need to get done, come to the table. There's complete transparency. Each side has access to the budget of the other so that there's clarity that, that the information that's being presented is in fact true. And then collectively, the discussion, the discussion takes place, and we try to balance how are we going to accomplish what's on the table with what are invariably going to be limited resources. Part of interest-based bargaining also says that we can make agreements about if you are, if, if one group is asked to forego for a year, that's written in as part of the written record, so there's no confusion about what is supposed to happen the following year. Or if one group gets part of what they want this year and part of what they want next year, that is written in. What I found.
That's your time.
Okay. Perfect.
Dale, same question. If you'd like me to reread it, I will.
Please reread it. Give me a moment.
Okay. This year, there was a very contentious and public negotiations with both the police and fire unions. What would you do to improve this process going forward?
Having been on both sides of union negotiations, both as a member of the management team and a member of a union, I have a little different perspect, I have a similar perspective. And the best thing you can do is start the conversation early. Establish what is the priority for each organization. Start the conversation. You've got to be able to talk to each other, and sometimes that takes a lot of time to figure out what is really important because the city does have limited resources. But we need to make sure we're taking care of our public servants. When the, when the alarms go off, you're the gentlemen and ladies that are going to go out there first and respond. Make sure we're taking care of our public servants, but we have limited resources. We start the discussion early. Where do we spend our limited money? Have that discussion. And if that means we start the discussion a year and a half before our contract comes due, that's when we start it. We don't wait till the end and go, "Well, we're going to put that off. We're going to put that off." And Chris hit on something else that I believe is very important, that if we say, "We can't do this for you now. We have to wait a year. We have to wait two years. We don't know, we have some budget uncertainties." It is integral that in a year, we go back and say, "This is what we said we could do. We can do it, or we can't." And if you say you can't, you have just basically nullified your word. Negotiations going forward become very challenging at that point. So have the discussions. You start early, and if you say you're going to do something, and it's not written part of the contract, you make sure you do it. Otherwise, the challenges get much worse.
Okay. Jim, would you like me to read you this question as well?
No. Okay. Contention exists when there are differences of opinions. I cannot tell you how pleased the city council and the mayor are with the quality of work that we have being done by the employees in the city of Pocatello. Our first responders are the very best. No, we did not give the police union everything they wanted. But let me tell you, the police union has 100% support from the city council, and we wish we could do better. But we had to look at the entire employee base, and we had to look at what we could do. And I'm pleased to say that across the board, we were able to give the best increase that has been given to the city employees since 1979. So we made progress. Wasn't every place we wanted to go. Wasn't everything all the police union and fire union wanted? But I think we did something better. We did better with what we were doing than any time in my memory.
Mr. Johnson, we stopped with you. We'll start with you.
Okay.
So what should the relationship be between the city council and the police department and the fire department?
It should be one of teamwork, to be sure. I think that the greatest way in which we can understand each other better is to get together and do things. More than just talk about wages. We need to talk about our benefits and equipment. I am proud of our city council for what we've been able to do in terms of getting equipment. You know, the breathing apparatuses for the fire department, I just can't imagine. I've been out on some of the, on some of the burns. I've looked at what you men and women go through. I couldn't do that. I absolutely could not go into a burning home. That's just not what I can do. But there are some things I can do maybe better than you can. Maybe negotiate a contract on a real estate deal. But I am grateful for those who are willing to do what you do. I, I look at some of the professionalism that we've been able to see. Little incident over on North Main where you could have, where the police could have shot a guy, but they used the bean bags and saved a man's life because of professional training. And that's what I want to see, is more, more training, make our people better. I don't want to train people so that they can go someplace else. I hope we can get to the point where people want to be in Pocatello, not only because it's a great place to work, but that the benefits and the wages are what are satisfactory and meet the needs of you and your families. We've got a lot, we've got a ways to go. I know that, and I'm anxious to get started soon doing things. I was not in the room when the negotiations took place, so I, I can't respond in terms of everything that's there. I saw one little situation where Scott Worts maybe didn't represent things the way I would like to have had it done, but I do believe.
Is it time?
I'm out of time. I do believe, I'm out of time.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, you need me to read the question again?
Please.
What should the relationship be between the city council and the police department and the fire department?
Thank you. That relationship is interesting, and it has two dynamics. Part of it is, as Jim mentioned, it's very important, that is a relationship, it's a community. We're a team. We are a part of making this city grow. The challenge of that relationship is we are an employer and employee group. I mean, that's, that's the challenge of that relationship, is that, yes, we're a team, and we're on the same team. We want to make our city better. We have the same goal. But it is basically you're an employee-employer relationship, and sometimes those get very contentious. And when they get contentious, much like any relationship, when things get contentious, you stop and have to have the hard talk about what matters. What can I do to make this better and be willing to compromise? Be willing to say, "I can do this much. Can you do that?" That's one of the challenges, is it's not just the team. And we are a team, and we are a unit, and all of us have the best interest of the city at heart. But when it comes down to it, it is an employee-employer relation, employee-employer relationship. So making sure, from a management perspective, it's called taking care of your people. If you take care of your people, I believe it's been summed up and it runs around the comments right now, you want to train your people so they know enough to find another job, but you want to make it so good for them that they don't want to go find that other job. And that's the challenge as an employer, as part of the city council. But the other challenge is, do I understand what you need? Do I understand? It's been 40 years since I put a set of turnout gear on. I don't understand modern firefighting and, I knew it was contemporary 40 years ago. I don't understand now. I would need to learn that so I can understand and listen to what your concerns are. And I think that's the important thing, is what are your concerns? What are we doing about it? Because in the end, it is an employer-employer relationship, but that doesn't mean that it's contentious. We need to understand each other.
All right. As, I spent a few years as the negotiator for the Bellingham Administrators Association. We were not a union, we were an association. So I have a really good experience of understanding of what it feels like when you're sitting opposite the guy who can, in my case, fire me because he just doesn't like me anymore. I had no job protection. And I understand what it means to represent a membership, that I'm not there to make the decision. I'm there to represent the members. So I like to talk about specifics. So the first thing in the, part of a successful relationship is a feeling of mutual respect. Respect is a feeling, and respect results from actions. So if, for example, a department does not feel respected and valued, the obvious question is what behaviors are you experiencing that are causing you to have that feeling? Because those behaviors need to go away. They need to go away. And they're frequently not about money. They're frequently not about money. They're about all kinds of other subtle messages. They're about disconnects between saying, "We value you," and then something happens, and we don't ask your opinion, we just tell you how it's going to be. You know, you've got to put your money where your mouth is. There is no excuse, no excuse, no excuse for rude, nasty comments when you are talking amongst the team. Period. It is possible to be civil. There needs to be pushback. If city council is going to do something, we don't need a rubber stamp. We need pushback, debate, fact-finding by the people who are going to be impacted, in this case, first responders, police, fire, by the decision that is made. And there are no backroom deals. No backroom deals. Everything's straight up and out front.
Okay. So next question, we're, we're going, there's an order, but we're going to, we're going to start with Chris again, this one. And since it was mentioned, how do you feel about the city hiring a law firm for Boise to represent them in negotiations? And do you support continuing to use this firm or going in a different direction?
Well, I would like, I would like to see it handled within the city and, and the department. Plus, if we're going to hire a lawyer, let's at least put that money into our own economy. But that's something else. So I believe that there is a place for having a unified negotiating voice so that you're not getting six people, and it's like herding cats. I don't know that a lawyer is necessarily the right person because lawyers are trained to dispassionately look at facts and look at situations. They are not trained to feel compassion for people. And I believe that that city council, for example, might be able to designate two, three of its members or some other city employee or local person or people to conduct negotiations. But I believe that negotiations are first and foremost about people, and I believe that the negotiator needs to be somebody who is trained in understanding that he or she is dealing with people. And lawyers, and I'm not dissing on them, I'm just saying that's not their training. And so it's difficult for a lawyer to open up their training and say, "You know what? This is about people." Because for lawyers, even if they specialize in negotiations, it's about winning for their client at all costs. And I don't want, as a city council member, I don't want part of that cost to be that the people that I, as a citizen, rely on for my safety and the people for, for whom I need to be responsible for creating a productive culture, I do not want those people disrespected. So I believe that there, that there needs to perhaps be a two-person negotiating team. That's how I always negotiated because it kept us on track. And if one of us was, you know, going into the weeds, you know, the elbow is there. And so that's what I would do.
Okay. So we're going to move to Jim on this same question. Jim, would you like me to repeat it?
No, I think I understand it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I was not in the room in any of that negotiation. I did feel like I was.
to be responsible for creating a productive culture, I do not want those people disrespected. So I believe that there needs to perhaps be a two-person negotiating team. That's how I always negotiated, because it kept us on track, and if one of us was, you know, going into the weeds, you know, the elbow was there. And so that's what I would do.
Okay. So we're going to move to Jim on this same question. Jim, would you like me to repeat it?
No, I think I understand it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I was not in the room in any of that negotiation. I did feel like I was not as well-informed as I would like to be until we got right down to the very end and we were starting to talk about nickels and dimes and dollars. I think the city council needs to be more involved. I would also like to see dollars, if we're paying people to do things, stay here in our We have, I think, a pretty decent relationship between the unions and city government. I feel very safe in our community. I feel like if I needed some, well, let me just give you an example. The other night, after city council, there was some contention, and we always have someone from the police force here to offer us protection. I went out towards my car, and suddenly there were a bunch of people who I had been opposed to on a decision at that city council meeting, and let me tell you, there were six police officers here in a matter of just seconds. And I appreciate them being on my side. It's greatly appreciated to know that we are being protected. I would like very much to have a non-contemptious negotiation with the people that we rely on the most, our first responders.
Dale, it's your turn to answer this. Would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I've heard it several times at this point, so.
Okay.
I agree that hiring a lawyer from Boise may not have been the best course of action. There are lawyers available, I'm sure, in the region, if not the town. Hiring one from our city may have produced a slight conflict, but I'm sure there are several who work in southeast Idaho who've done very well. We should also consider the option of hiring a mediator. These are people whose job it is to work out difficult situations. They mediate when there are differences, they keep you focused, they keep you in the bounds, and they also help us keep our personalities in check, because often when you get in situations like this, that's when your strong personalities come to bear, and that's usually a good thing. That's how you get opinions expressed, but keeping yourself under control and on track and on task. So I'm not sure that was the best course of action. And part of that is the clarity and openness that we need to have. So if we're considering hiring a lawyer from Boise, did all of city council know about that? Evidently, all of city council didn't know about that.
We knew, we knew about it.
Yeah, well, but again, it's, yeah, you knew about it, but were you involved in this? Did we involve the, yeah, were we involved in the right, were we involved the right people in discussion? Did we involve all the right stakeholders in the discussion? So it comes back to communication and discussion. When we're having issues like this, and you're going to have them, because it's the nature of running a government, you're going to have differences of opinion, differences of perspective. We look at things different ways. We need to understand each other's perspectives, so we can have, come to that common ground, and perhaps using a mediator, one from at least east Idaho, to keep it, some of the money we're spending in the region might be some of the best use of that. Thank you.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
You get to start again.
Sure.
What is your strategy for increasing resources available for the city? How do you bring in new businesses to increase city revenue?
How do you bring in new businesses to increase city revenue? Make the city people-friendly. Businesses will come where their people want to go. If your people want to come here, it's much easier to convince a business owner that we have a city that is, we have low crime rates, we have good response times for our first responders, we have good schools, we have wonderful parks, we have wonderful recreation opportunities. These are things that people want to come to a city for. Many of these things we have. We need to make sure that we're enhancing all those opportunities, so that people want to come here. Because businesses don't make decisions in the cold, they make decisions on what is going to keep people happy. If I want people to come to work for me and stay with me, I want to make sure I put them in a place they want to be. They need to be in a place, a town that's welcoming, which we are, a town that provides educational opportunities for their children. We have a university, we can provide good quality education all the way through university. So we make sure we have a good relationship with our university. We make sure we have a good relationship. We have that communication with everybody who works for the city in any capacity, so that if there's a concern that they see, because as we've all noticed, I can't see everything, my perspective is limited, but if I'm talking to the firefighters, if I'm talking to the people, the dog catchers, if I'm talking to anybody, what do you see in the city that we're doing well, that we're doing wrong? And part of, and that gives us an idea of, okay, we're doing this really well. Are we doing it as efficiently as we can? We need to look at efficiencies. Are we doing as efficiently as we can? And I think that's one thing we need to look at, is, because it's often easy, it's like, "Well, we just cut salaries and we have more money." But that's not good, because that's somebody's livelihood. That's somebody's buying groceries at a store locally. We need to make sure we're doing things as efficiently as we can, and openness and honesty helps show that, because if somebody knows a better way of doing things, listen to it when they talk to us.
This is Stevens.
Could you read? Yeah, yeah, please.
What is your strategy for increasing resources available for the city? How do you bring in new businesses to increase city revenue?
Okay, so, I think there are two different questions there, so I'll try to do a minute per. So increasing resources, one of the first things that, if you're talking about money and/or time, and time is money, and money is time, the first thing you do is you make sure that you are running an efficient corporation. This is a municipal corporation. And that means we need to be having regular efficiency audits, we need to be talking to departments, we need to make sure that we're not duplicating, wasting, that we use every person we have to do what they do best, and that we're doing it efficiently. So that, you would be amazed in the business world what kind of money and resources is divulged when corporations go through, as they do regularly, business audits and efficiencies. So if we're talking about, "How would I increase money?", that's the first thing I would do. I'm not sure yet how to make money, I'm working on it. I mean, like manufacture, like put a buck in a jar and shake it and pull out two. But, and I do believe that we need to break our reputation as being an example of one of the highest taxed cities in the state. Boise uses us to show their people how great it is not to live in Pocatello, it could be worse. So that's in terms of new businesses. We also need to capitalize on what we have. So we have a university that has renewable energy training program, fastest-growing job market in the country. We have wind, we have sun, we have INL that is working on renewable energy, clean energy. Why are we not the inter-mountain west center for renewable energy manufacturing and training?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. When we think in terms of economic development, we have some great resources that we are probably underutilizing. In our budget, we support two economic engines, Bannock Development and Ready. Ready is centered in Idaho Falls. I am not fully convinced that Ready has Pocatello's best interest. And so I think we should probably structure our resources behind one of these organizations, not both of them. And right now, I would support our effort behind Bannock Development. I think we, as a city, can work a lot smarter. Some of you may have heard that I'm promoting the possibility of having one community instead of two here between Pocatello and Chubbick. If we were able to do away with the duplicate services, we would be able to increase our resources maybe as much as 25%. And that way, we would be able to accomplish so much more, and we would be able to alleviate the great challenge that our taxpayers are facing throughout all of Bannock County, not just Pocatello and Chubbick. If we were able to cut those dollars down, can you imagine getting rid of 12 elected positions between Pocatello and Chubbick? Those people, including me, would have to run again to be elected to the new community. We might be really surprised at what we would end up with. I think we need to work smarter rather than harder in terms of economic development. We've got some good things happening with the North Gate addition, we've got some new subdivisions throughout the community that are coming. We need to get behind it and make it happen.
Okay. So what we're going to do is, this time we'll start with Jim, and it'll go Jim, then Chris, and then Dale. So, where do you stand on collective bargaining, and will you support getting both unions recognized in city code?
You know, I'm not sure, Andy, if I'm smart enough to know all of the ramifications of putting that, putting the unions in city code. It's just not an area I'm knowledgeable of. So I am willing to be educated. I am willing to have what is in the best interest of this entire community. Every one of our union members deserves the attention that they're paying their dues for, and we need to do what we can to see that the very best working conditions are here. We need to make sure that our people are being taken care of, and I'm not sure, I mean, all of you know I'm a real estate broker by profession. I go out, if I sell a piece of property, I get paid. If I don't sell anything, I don't get paid. And so I have not had the same experience that many of you in this room have had. I'm excited that there are better ways to do things, and we need to work collectively to make sure we do the right things. And I'm willing to learn. I really am willing to learn. And if it can be demonstrated to me that this is the way we need to go, I'm all for it.
So Chris, move to you. Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, I don't think so. Well, what the heck, go ahead.
Where do you stand on collective bargaining, and will you support getting both unions recognized in city code?
So what I know now, or at least what I think I know, is that the teachers' union and fire union are recognized in state statutes. The police association or federation is not. I believe that, at the very least, there needs to be some action, be it resolution, be it in city code, whatever is legal, and I don't know that right now, but there needs to be some clear city action that says, "We will bargain with police, they are a bargaining unit in our eyes," whether they're, they've officially gone through the formal process of unionizing. I will also say, as a former association co-president, that if the membership of the police department were to decide that they wanted to go through the formal process with their membership to determine whether or not they wanted to formally become a union, I'm not going to oppose that. I'm not going to oppose that. I would want to sit down and talk with folks, I would want to understand the ramifications, I would want to understand why the police membership believed that's what they needed to do, to see if there is another route. But I am not opposed to unions, I am not opposed to associations, I am not opposed to groups of people balancing the playing field when you're a small group and you're negotiating with a large group. That's exactly the position that the administrators, principals, and so forth were in, in Bellingham. You know, we were negotiating with the people who could fire us on a dime. We chose not to unionize, but we were, we did demand and have a written agreement that we were a bargaining unit and we would be dealt with as a legitimate bargaining unit for our membership.
Mr. Spencer, it's your question. Would you like me to repeat it?
I think I have a grasp of it. My understanding of collective bargaining is different than I believe the other people up here is that, I have been a member of a collective bargaining unit, I have been a member of a union that we voted to decertify, I've been a member of a group that voted to unionize. I'm not in that position anymore, but I've been on all three sides of that coin. Collective bargaining is important, I think recognizing a group that can do this is important, because what, the key words that are, "collective bargaining." It is a group that can discuss the needs and wants, so we get to the point where we can come to a common resolution, have the discussions, and again, starting early, if you have that collective bargaining, their task, as it were, is to make sure they're looking out for, "What is the city doing? What do my people need? What have my, what did my people get in the last contract discussion agreement that worked well? What didn't they get?" Because there's so much more, and as Chris alluded, there's so much more to this than money. It's so much, it is the, it's the small changes in how you respect your people, how you speak about your opponents. If you're on the opposite sides of a bargaining situation, you often feel as an opposition situation, and how you speak about people that don't agree with you speaks volumes about how you are as a person and where your perspective is. And if you don't agree with each other, that's fine. We're not going to agree on everything, because we have different points of view, we have different end goals. On a small scale. On a large scale, our end goal is making the city safer, together, all of us, and I think that's what we're trying to do. So, should we codify it? Again, I don't know enough about the city codes and the implications of that, you know, if that's a good thing or not. I certainly think it's worth looking into, and perhaps one of you people can enlighten me as to what that involves, so we can have that discussion, figure out what it takes to get there from here, and if it's good for the city and good for whatever organization or union we have.
Mr. Spencer, I'm going to start with you again.
Sure.
What is your philosophy in addressing compensation gaps and inequity among groups of workers, for example, first responders in comparison to general employees?
That's an apples and oranges discussion. The expectation of a first responder, and this is going back 40 years from, that was sort of my job, the expectation was, I was answering the call, and if it was my day off, that's great, answer the call anyway, we need the help. It's an apples and oranges thing. I am much more likely to request extra help from my firefighters and police departments on their scheduled days off than I am from my administrative staff in city hall, because of the nature of your work. So we need to be able to make that difference, acknowledge the difference, because it's a different, it's a different thing. If you're a city employee and you work in this building and you're part of the administration of this city, the expectation that you'll have every weekend off is sort of built in you. It's an understanding that you're going to have every weekend off. So talking about comparing that expectation, that is something they have every weekend's off. When I was in that line of work and speaking to my son, I figure on his schedule, so I figure when I can talk to him, because he's in law enforcement, and his schedule, he doesn't have that routine day off. It is hard to compare those two, to say that, we've got to give the same package to both, because we can't. They're different things. Different entities require different responses, that's part of that discussion of, how can we acknowledge the fact that you guys work a different schedule? What do we do to make sure that we don't cut you short, but we don't, you know, disenfranchise our administrative staff in other ways either?
Mr. Johnson?
Would you read that question? I got a different thought in my mind than what Dale was doing, so maybe I didn't understand.
What is your philosophy in addressing compensation gaps and inequity among groups of workers, for example, first responders in comparison to general employees?
People deserve to be compensated for what they do and how they contribute. And I'm not sure we can ever get to the point where the compensation will be equal to the risk that our first responders take. But we must do everything we can to get compensation to a point where people are still willing to do what needs to be done to protect this city and to get the work done. And it's never going to be equal, but each of us have different qualifications, each of us have different roles to play, and I hope we'll always be able to cooperate with one another, so that the best interest of the city is foremost.
I think, first of all, you have to have clear criteria that govern what you do. If stuff isn't written down and the basis on which you make decisions is not clear and available in written form for everybody, then invariably you end up with a mess. So from education, there's a hierarchy of needs. And the first need is survival, because nothing else matters if you don't survive. So I think we need to, just off the top of my head, and I might, you know, be more sophisticated with more time, we need to consider responsibility. We need to consider the danger of the employee is putting him or herself in. We need to understand whether or not the job they are doing is necessary for the survival of a group or a single human being. And we need to consider whether or not you can kick the can down the road without creating a further problem. In all those cases, responsibility, the danger, going toward danger, not running away from it or standing by, the survival of another human being or group of human beings, and if not, then survival includes, you know, their welfare, so injury. And it can't be kicked down the road. If there is a live incident, it is happening now, and you can't put it off. Also, the decision-making process of first responders is very different than a white-collar employee. I can take a week, a month, I can take a long time, I can get a lot of input, et cetera. A first responder can't. I'm there, it's happening, I have to make a decision, I have to do something. And that puts them certainly in line for public anger, if not legal liability. So I think first responders are different and need to be paid on a different level.
Chris, that's your time for that one. The good news is, we're going to let you keep talking, because we're going to --
Oh, Andy, my best friend.
So we'll do Chris, Dale, Jim. And this will be our last question. Why should we endorse you for this position?
You know, I'm too old to beg, and I'm not for sale. So I don't know. You're going to decide if you can endorse me or not based on who I am, not just here tonight. But look at what I've done in the community. Read what I've written. I wrote in defense of the North Bannock County Fire District because it needed to be written about. I pushed for Medicaid expansion because we had 72,000 Idahoans who couldn't go to the doctor. I am working on clarifying which public access roads actually are public access roads and should not be gated off by private landowners and posted as no trespassing, because with the new stand-your-ground law, some hunter innocently, on the wrong place, on the wrong property, could get shot. So look at what I've done. I don't talk a lot about what I do, except in situations like this. I just get out there and do it, because it needs to be done. Getting a sewer in Johnny Creek before we have homeowners who can't sell their houses because they can't put a new drain field in. That is happening. That is happening right now, and our city is not talking about it. So I believe that those are the kinds of causes that I can take on from the inside with more credibility from the inside than I can take them on from the outside under our current administration. So I don't know why you should endorse me, because I can't read your mind. But what I will tell you is, what you see is what you get. I've had a lot of very large, tall men shaking their fingers in my face in my school, telling me I'm the worst principal they've ever seen.
That's your time.
And you deal with it. So I got guts.
Dale, it's your question. Would you like me to repeat it?
I'm fine, thank you. My perspective is slightly different. I've been where you are. I have been that first responder. I have had my son call me up and said that he went to a unresponsive person and he just got to talk to somebody, because, well, I just watched Unaccompanied Death and I just had to, just got to talk it out, Dad. So I have a different perspective than many on that, because I have been there. I've been getting that phone call. I've gotten that, oh, by the way, come back from Christmas. Why? Because we've got boats underway. Let's go. Let's go play the game. This is what our job is. Let's go. So I have been there. Does that make me an ideal representative of you? Maybe not. That was years, that was 30-something years ago. But I have an understanding, at least, of what you guys go through and what it takes to be on that side of it. I would like to think that since then, I've done a lot of other things in my life that have given me perspective. I've been in the negotiation table on the side of, this is what our company can do. I've also been there as part of a union, that this is what we need to be able to keep doing it. So I've been on both sides of that coin, so I understand that perspective. And again, I'm also, you know, I'm not the youngest person there is anymore, and I couldn't do that job anymore. I understand I could do, no longer do, what I refer to as a young man's game, as much as I liked doing it. It was fun, but I can't do it anymore. But I can support you. I can listen to what you have to say and be your ears and your voice on council, if that's what's needed. But I can also encourage us to find ourselves a common ground that we can start having the discussions wherever we need to go. And I think that's the bigger thing that we should be doing, is working on common ground, common discussions, and have them long enough that we can make decisions so that we don't get ourselves into ugly shouting matches in the press.
I think that you know me. You know where I stand. This is a nonpartisan position, and I think I have been working hard for everyone in this community. I'm not ashamed of any of the decisions I've made. I'm willing to talk and discuss every issue in advance. I prepare myself before city council meetings so that I can help make the right decisions for the good of our community. I've been involved in many of the same activities that you, as union members, have been involved with. I've gotten out and participated, because you are doing the right things, and I wanted to be a part of those right things. There's such a great professionalism in our fire department and in our police force that I just am grateful that you are all part of this community and I get to be a part of it with you. I am a fiscally responsible person. I'm not going to waste money. I want to see that we use the resources that we have to the very best ability that we can. I feel that I have done a good job in representing all of Pocatello in the past, and I look forward to being able to represent all of you and all of Pocatello in making the right decisions to build our community and help it to be better. I think we're on the verge of additional greatness. I'm not afraid of growth. And that growth that's going to come is going to make it easier for us to lift the tax burden off of people who are feeling the weight of that right now. Pocatello's a great place. I'm proud to be in Pocatello, and I want to continue representing you.
Okay, well, that's all we've got. We want to thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
And we've got C2 at 8:00 in about half an hour.
Yeah, thanks for doing this. I appreciate it. Appreciate it.